Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. I'd like to call this meeting to order. If everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Chairman Leonard to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, tonight we have two separate public hearings. We'll kind of do the first part of it combined, and the second part we'll have two public comment periods. The first will be as an amendment to the planned development district standards formerly known as game on, and the second will be a rezoning and annexation petition for tax map 644-0000-0038, maybe one too many zeros there, 644-0000042, from RUD in the county to PDD in the city as part of a 100% annexation petition. With that, Susan Britt, if you would introduce the first of both topics, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mic on? Okay, good. Short, so I had to pull it down. So, Mayor, Council, Planning Commission members, the applicant for the public hearing tonight is proposing to amend the planned developments district standards formerly known as game on by a change in the zoning text and the development standards and the annexation of two additional parcels into the PDD. The applicant has participated in two design charrettes with the Planning Commission at their February and March meetings. Input provided during these workshops have been incorporated into the developments concept plan. The development as depicted on the revised concept plan is intended to reflect the general arrangement of proposed uses on the site. The purpose of the amendment is to provide clarity in specific permitted uses and to implement the vision as outlined in the city's 2019 update to the comprehensive plan as a regional mixed-use district. The previous development standards of the PDD formerly known as game on was focused on a large private recreational enterprise with supplemental uses being commercial and residential. The current proposed amendment is centered on a main street style commercial and residential uses that will support and sustain the commercial areas. The original PDD permitted 410 residential units consisting of 250 apartments over retail and 160 townhomes. No single-family detached homes were permitted. Currently, Trinity Towns consist of 167 townhomes which are still a part of the PDD, and they will remain so. What is being proposed in the amendment is a net total of 80 single-family detached homes and additional 80 carriage homes, and the previously approved live work units have been decreased to 225. This development will provide a much-needed and desirable commercial retail space with an economic impact of over $200 million. Staff recommendation is for approval of the PDD text amendment and rezoning.
Thank you, Susan. As I said, there are two separate public hearings that were advertised, and so we'll handle them slightly separately. I have a sign-up sheet. If you signed up to talk about either or both in a combined fashion, that's fine. We'll take your comments at that time. If you want to hold your comments and only talk about annexation and rezoning rather than the changes to the PDD standard like Susan just outlined, that's the part we'll do first. And the way we'll do this is we'll do a period of presentation by our Economic Development Committee. We'll do a period of presentation and comments by the developer. There'll be a period of time when the council and the commission can ask the developer and the Economic Development Committee or city staff questions. Then we'll open it up for public comment after that, if that's okay. And first then, I would ask Jim Stalford. If you'd, like we have our rules, if you'd state your name and address.
Everybody's just back up. Jim Stalford, 31020, Executive Point. Did you turn it off? It's on. Go on. Yell a little louder.
We can hear you fine.
All right. So, I also chair the Economic Development Committee, and the game on, I think as everybody has been aware of, the last few years has been a, to say, a work in progress. So, we've spent the last six years trying to find new people, new developers, new ways to change that facility from a major sports complex to an economic driver for the city. So, what we've come up with is been, is going to be a great addition to the city. It's going to allow for sustainability, for economic growth in the city, for tax revenue, and give us a complete connectivity on walkability, use, and really control what's coming in to the city from an economic standpoint and retail standpoint.
Thank you, Jim. Is Paul here? There you are. Again, if you'd state your name and introduce yourself. Thank you.
I think I'm in the middle of Jim and Susan. Hello, my name is Paul Saget, and I represent the petitioner, Kinger Development. He's in the other room. We had simultaneous hearings, so he's taking one in the other room in Charlotte, and I'm starting this off, but he'll be in briefly. In these maps that you guys can see, if you can see them pretty closely from where you are, when they're talking about the full development, this is 55 acres of development. You know, right out there now is kind of the car memorial out there right now, and a bunch of land that just hasn't been developed are really gone in a good direction. We've got our hands on this 55 acres and looking to do something that the city's been promoting and wanting, which is mixed-use development. For those of you that are familiar, and it's hard to see a little bit for everybody, but coming in from the damn roadside, that'll look like a median coming through, about a 30-foot wide median for development with retail and commercial down on the lower side with live work units above. It'll create a drive-through area, a place for you to walk, talk, bike, and things like that. It'll go to around median in the area. It'll branch off to a four-acre park, but then we're really heavily taking into consideration the stream that's out there, make sure that's protected, and making sure it's part of the overall development. So, we've got walking paths through there. We've got a pedestrian path that'll go up into brewery, restaurant, kind of an open food hall. If you've been to Optimist Park in Charlotte, it's kind of the design of it. We've separated the carriage homes to the top side of the ridge on that Stonecrest side, and then we've carried a single-family down towards the lower right-hand side coming through that. Overall, we're looking at about 100,000 square foot of commercial space. In addition, over there, 225 apartments as they shared, a total of 75, a total of 150 detached and attached single-family, and then all within, obviously, TKA. It'll be a roughly 130 to 150 million-dollar project. It'll probably take about three to four years throughout that development. Current impact analysis, we just got this economic impact. I think it's pretty important, but over the initial three years of the first building, it'll, during the construction timeframe, timeframe, create about 500 jobs and annually projected at 1,460. Earnings throughout that annual job projected at $62 million, and the economic output in millions for the overall project is about 220 million. So, in that project, it'll bring really what Tika K has told us they're looking for as far as overall development, which is something to develop so you don't have to go over 77, you don't have to go to Fort Mill, you don't have to go up into Charlotte. You can live, work, play right next door to where you are. We know traffic is a concern. We know road development's a concern. We've talked to the mayor, we've talked to everybody. We'll go through TIA studies, we'll go through road development. Those will have a lot of recommendations that typically in every development, we make those recommendations and do those road improvements. We're used to that being part of it. So, we know there's probably going to be impetus for a lot of conversation here, but we feel overall development, the schematic feels really good. We haven't done the actual aesthetic design yet because we're trying to see if this works first, and then we'll go through and create the elevations, design, look, feel of all that once we know what direction we're in.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. At this time then, would be a time for council if they have any questions for Jim, or Paul, or Susan, or any otherbody, anybody else in city staff.
Yes, I have one for Paul. Maybe a couple, sorry. Thank you.
I probably should have.
Paul, as you can imagine, we've got and we've received a lot of feedback from public on this development as you've received from us, and you've handled that very well, and want to bring up a couple of points that came up to us over the last several days. These may come up again, and I don't want to be redundant, but the jobs piece. Can you give us some kind of understanding of where those jobs will come from? Will they be local jobs, or are these going to be contractors from out of town? What's your goal there?
So, typically, the group that we use for a lot of our development right now is actually out of Union County. I've been working and talking with Jim about more localized people, you know, to help with that development and help with that. A lot of city works, county works, state works, has obviously all come from South Carolina and York County because they're all present here currently working through that. So, you know, what we do in North transfer to South, you know, not that far away, but it'll change who we use and what we do. And Jim and I have been working, talking with different groups, different people for land decision development and, you know, all those kind of things. So, that's been part of that process. So, I believe those would be a lot of that. Then, long-term, obviously, it'll be onsite, you know, jobs. So, I mean, that'll come from a lot of, that'll be all South Carolina.
Okay. Thank you. There was also some discussion about buffers. Can you share with us what the buffer will look like along Stonecrest?
Yeah, so we'll have an improved buffer coming all the way around there. First of all, on the Stonecrest side, all the units that'll face will be the fronts. There'll be no driveways or anything.
If I may, for those that maybe have only seen this for the first time, that's on the left side of the screen, correct?
Yeah. I mean, I don't know how well you can see me when I get far away, but I can go over there if you can still hear me. Oh, take the mic. All right.
Thank you.
If my kids could see me now. So, up on this side over here at Stonecrest, as you come around, these are not driveways. They're all the frontal facades or elevations to the homes. So, when you drive by, it'll all be streetscape. We'll do an elevated planting level all the way down through here as well as a sidewalk that'll come all the way along this way. One of the important things we talked to the community, city, and everybody about is connectivity. So, this'll walk all the way up, and then these paths will come all the way back down. So, you kind of have a whole place where you can walk, bike, run, jog, and come all the way back down south and then back up the sidewalks. Back up over here, I know we've had some questions about where the parking would be and the development over there, and we'll do an elevated piece of plantings and everything to really create a buffer so when you drive by, you don't see that it's there. We don't want you driving by and seeing cars. We want you to see the monumentation, the presentation for the community, then see trees, the front of homes, and really feel like it's just a neighborhood. But beyond there is then when the development, so if you want to use it, it's there for you to use. If you're just driving by and want to pass it, it won't change your visual.
Okay. Good. Thank you. I think that's it for me. You can drop the mic now.
Paul, width-wise, as I understand it, width-wise, as I understand it, you're talking about 35 feet on Stonecrest and 40 on dam, is that right?
As far as...
The width of the buffer.
Yeah, so whatever the standard buffer is, and then we're going to tree-plant that with more mature plantings and everything like that to give it height, so you're not driving by three-inch bushes, you know, over the next four years. You know, those have some extended plantings to create that. And then we have buffers down along the damn roadside as well, so we've extended those. And then you'll see pocket parks throughout the residential. The main thing is we're trying to create walkability. I mean, again, live, work, play, I don't want to burn that, but the four-and-a-half-acre park in the middle is part of then what that protected stream basin's going to be, which is like another six or seven acres. So, there's a wide span of swath of 10 acres there, not to mention all the other parks. And then that green space coming through the main Burke Dale-esque kind of development would be all activated for people to, you know, sit at the benches, you know, hang out, have a coffee or an ice cream, or sit and read a book or anything, because the goal is that people are walking and moving through this village as an overall community feel.
Let the council finish on that last piece. Is that okay? Thanks.
Paul, you commented on some road improvements that we're going to do. Could you elaborate on that a little more? Traffic is a major concern for all folks in York County and around this area. Could you elaborate a little more on what kind of road improvements we could expect?
Yeah, so I think we talked briefly about this as well. I mean, we know there's going to be some road improvements in general, just for the condition of the roads, and also some road widening, I think, in just our second, our whatever review of this this is, but we know there's going to be beyond just a left-turn lane coming. We know there could be some traffic signals and some modified, you know, maybe some road sectioning and berms and cutting them off there and medians coming down the middle. We don't know what that'll be until the TIA comes across, but it's a large project, so we have a fair expectation of some sizable road improvements.
Thank you.
Counsel, good.
All right, if there's any Planning Commission questions for Paul, or for Jim, or for the city staff?
Quick question, Paul. You have a question about what you guys have filled out now, 410 to 542, possible total units. We use the term possible total units. The original PDD had a parking structure of 740 spaces up to and exceeding and up to four floors. Your... Apologize. Is it working? Okay. So, the original PDD had a parking structure of up to 740 spaces, not to exceed four levels. I'm not noticing a parking structure in your guys' build-out. With a 32% increase in units, you're going to have enough parking for all commercial as well as all residential?
Yes, I'll take the mic. Be right back, y'all. So, we've surface parked all of this. So, if you see, and I'm colorblind, so there's no help, but that's parking, 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 big parking lot back there, parking lot up over there. So, we've spread out the parking to keep it down low. You know, structured parking is really detrimental to just an overall development, and it also can be an eyesore, just a big lump of concrete there. So, we've surface parked this and kept it behind the buildings. Again, when you're driving down Stonecrest and you come to that, there's a height, there's an elevation there. So, actually, when you come back, that you wouldn't even see down into where that's going to be, where all that parking will drop in. Another interesting part here where we have identified potentially for the food hall, restaurants, brewery, things like that, they have a height elevation. So, if I was sitting there, you know, with my family, hanging out, having sandwiches, watching a game, or whatever it is, I can kind of see back over the park, you know, layout over there, then the community would be down the hill. So, it's really kind of a cool topography piece, but we've identified roughly 800 to 900 spots in the surface parking, basically taking the overall square footage of how much we've designated to parking, and then a parking spot of what the size is typically in a development. And then we've also identified that should we be able to, I know we've talked about the other parcel, that would be primary commercial with roughly 600 more spots, so we'd overpark that. That's not taking into consideration any residential parking. So, all the residential housing parking with driveways and their two-car garages, which all of them have the garages, would all be separate from that unit count.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. One other question regarding density. So, the original PDD allowed for, I believe it was 81,000 square feet of commercial, and the new PDD states that it starts at 100,000, which I understand that that's what you guys are planning to build out as 100,000.
Yes, sir.
The PDD allows for up to 700,000 square feet.
I think the unknown delta is, and maybe other groups here, Four Star, who, there's a controlling entity on the other parcel that could be absorbed into it potentially. I think the planning is, instead of having, go back and do an amendment or a change, that should that be absorbed, I believe the city's direction with that is to be commercial. So, they want to be able to absorb that as commercial and not have to go back through the process should that be adopted at that time.
That is correct. That was our thought on that.
Somebody show us on the map what that is for public.
Come back. I should have done the lapel.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, look, this is a step. This is good. So, right up over here, right up over here, coming in, and again, this main boulevard, for those who have seen that, and Burke Dale's just going through that renovation, not to just use their name, but Kingsley-esque, you know, as far as the design with commercial, this being all open, we didn't just jam it with a small road, we kind of kept it separate. We know parking is a concern. We know slowing it down with some quote-unquote "eye candy" through that area will make that a nice, easy path. But backing up over here is where this is targeted for additional commercial, and this would be heavily parked. I mean, it would be more surface parking and more vertical, you know, with the buildings, potential for a hotel, a large commercial headquarters, and maybe like medical office.
So, kind of a high-rise type building is the...
I think high would, not high, we've got height limitations, I believe it's 70 feet. Yeah, four stories, so nothing would be high. It would just be more directed at, you know, maybe corporate headquarters or something like that, so they'd be wider, but not high, so that we wouldn't have that visual issue.
I struggled with understanding the scale of that number of 700,000 square feet, and so did a quick Google Earth, and Walmart is 200,000 square feet. So, that's adding three more Walmarts in a lot that is five acres, 10 acres?
So, I think if you take a Walmart, though it's got 20, 30, it's got 30-foot ceilings, it's really only one floor. So, when you take that from a commercial standpoint, typically that front, that first story's going to be 14, 16, 18 feet, you know, if you have something grand, and the rest of them are going to be 10, 12 with the medians in between. So, you can fit in that building, you could have fit two and a half floors, you know, or been going into your third floor on that piece. So, we'd get tighter on this and a little bit taller, but again, we'd still have normal height regulations and limitations for those buildings.
Okay. Thank you.
With that then, we'll open up the floor, I guess, for public comment. And again, we'll have two specific public hearings, and if you want to bundle all your comments on both of them here, fine, we'll be able to sort the comments out. Hopefully, people signed up on the sheet that said "public hearing comments" and not "public comments," but at the end, when I've come to the end of this list, I'll ask if there's anybody else who signed up on the other list who needs to speak at this part of the public hearing. Then we'll close this public hearing and immediately open the second one, which is, again, against the annexation and rezoning portion of it. There'll be no new presentation material really from that. Everything that's been said so far will have set the floor for that public hearing. So, that'd be another second period of quick council comment, quick commission comment, and public comment. And with that then, when you're asked to come up, you'll have three minutes. If you'd state your name and address, I'd appreciate that. Doug Creed.
My name is Doug Creed. I live at 707 Ledgestone Court. I appreciate the opportunity to make some comments. We, Stonecrest Villas is basically elderly community of 86 different units and really have really concerns about a couple of things. The first one is hopefully being able to actually exit our community after this is all completed. So, we're very interested in the traffic situation and would love to see a roundabout at the end of our street that would allow us to easily get out of the community since the opening of Hubert Graham. We have a lot more traffic, and especially coming up the hill from Serenity, it appears rather quickly. Sometimes it's hard to get out. So, that would be the first thing that we're interested in. The other thing is that our little street, which is about a quarter of a mile, has no exit from the street. It's all, you go down and turn around and come back. And it's a private community, and things have gotten a whole lot less private, and it's been around for now. That road's been on around for 16 years, and we'd like some consideration to make that road a city road as long as all this construction and everything is getting to be less private. So, if we could be, we'd like to be considered to have Ledgestone Court be taken over by the city. Other than that, we have no problems with the, it looks like a wonderful development to us, and we don't have anything, no problems with the development.
All right. Thank you very much, Doug.
Thank you.
And you'll have to apologize if I'll mess up my name. Carolyn Paddock? Did I get it right?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you'd come up and say your name again and your address, and you'll have that same three minutes.
So, I'm not all decked out. My name is Carolyn Paddock. I live on 1238 Stonecrest Boulevard. Yay! So, I came up just with a couple of things that we are concerned about as well, especially with the busy road. It's our neighborhood road, and we're worried about the kids playing, and it's already sped up, like you said, about with having Hubert Graham open, and I know it's also going to become a cutthroat, a cut-through for the park that's going up, the Catawba Park. So, we've got that as well. So, I was concerned about that, and I did have a question, too, about the entrances on Stonecrest, where they're at and how many there were. I couldn't really tell from the picture, like, there looks like there's two, two between two houses, and I just wanted to find out if that was an entrance or not.
I'll ask.
Because, no, I know the one at Reliance Court is an entry point on Reliance Court, but there's another one like two houses down. Is that an entryway? There looks like there's a road. Okay, that's my problem with that because that's two houses apart. It looks great on the map, but if you come down to our houses, there's just two houses, and you have two entrances. So, I did have major concerns about that. We also are concerned about the trees still being on Stonecrest. That was another concern, especially because I know you said it's going to be standard, but I heard them say 30 to 40 feet, so I would really like to know what standard is because that's a big difference.
It's 35 feet on Stonecrest Boulevard, 40 feet off of the state road, which is damn road.
Thank you.
And that is spelled out in the PDD.
Got you. Thank you. And the other, only other thing was just about giving consideration about it being a neighborhood still. I don't know if there's much you can do, but it already doesn't feel like a neighborhood. It feels like, like I said, the cut-through, and I didn't know if you guys were going to make it where that's kind of becomes part of the neighborhood, or if we're going to stay separate with the neighborhoods, with the townhomes. Does that make sense?
I would say, I'm not quite sure what you mean.
Okay. Just if it's going to be combined with those...
It won't be combined with the Serenity Point HOA.
It will not be.
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Those are two separate entities.
Okay. And then still, I still have concern about how many the, how many homes are being increased. I liked the first one before with the 410 versus the 540, and that was it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carolyn. And next is it, Bryden or Brian Chu? Sorry. Got a high end on the A, then I looked at it like a D. All right, again, if you'd say your name and your address, please, and you'll have three minutes.
It's Brian Chu, 1232 Stonecrest. I'm Carolyn's next-door neighbor, so I'm directly across the street from the proposed parking lot. I have a number of concerns, as you might imagine. You mentioned that there is another entryway between Reliance and up towards Walmart. My question is, and maybe I'll grab this and I'll point it out exactly. So, that's me, second spot. Where it's labeled Stonecrest Boulevard, there's currently a median there. My question is, is will that median remain to where this entrance here, if that's just going to be kind of a right turn only, or if that median will actually be opened up? That's, I do have that question. It's a little unclear just because the labeling of Stonecrest Boulevard is directly over that landscape median.
I would say at this point that hasn't been determined yet. Are you saying there's not a median across from Reliance?
I'm sorry, there's a...
There's a cut-through at Reliance, correct?
Yes, across from Reliance. There's a second entrance, second entry point.
You can talk about the one going up further towards Ledgestone.
Right. Second entry point here?
Right. That hasn't been determined yet. We've had some conversations about it being right in, right out.
That would be better.
But that is something that will be hammered out during the preliminary planning process.
Okay.
100%. And part of the TIA.
And again, we've talked a lot about the TIA, right? The TIA process will make a series of recommendations on how to best control traffic and keep neighborhoods safe and reduce traffic and reduce cross-turns across each other. So, that's the exact kind of topic that will be addressed in that.
Okay. And with the 35-foot buffer zone, is that going to be elevated, a berm, that sort of thing, or is that kind of, again, up to the developer to decide?
Paul, I don't know if you heard that one? The question, the question was, in the 35-foot buffer, would that be a berm and elevated buffer, or would it be just treescape?
Right. So, we don't always know, but if we go through there and see a place that's a berm, I don't think that's... Yeah, I think it is naturally currently a berm. I was just kind of curious if that was going to be kept, but it seems like it's too early in the process right now. And I guess just an overall comment, I actually moved to TKA about five years ago from Indianland because I saw the very same type of development happening there. My commute got worse, the schools were overcrowded, kids in trailers, things like that, and I just kind of see the same thing happening. So, leave it at that.
All right. Thank you, Brian. Sharon? Deanna Freo? Sharon? Deanna Freo? Did I get it right? Wrong? No, we're going to find out. You're going to say your name and your address, please.
And my bad handwriting. Congratulations. Yes, I'm Sharon Denoffreoh. I live at 365 Calming Way, Serenity Point, so just very near Stonecrest and obviously right on top of this development. I guess upfront, I want to express that I oppose the development as it's currently proposed. There's a number of issues. I hear reference to what things need to be considered around roads, but no really concrete plans, budgets, commitments from entities that are probably outside of this building, likely at a state level. It's a big deal. The dam road and other construction that needs to occur, I want to know the timing as opposed to kind of just generalities. Secondly, there's an increase in residential units. I think somebody just mentioned 30-something percent. That's significant. We worked almost 10 years to start Catawba Park. It'll now be overrun with kids. I don't see a net gain in quality of life. I know we're talking about economic growth. Our slogan here is "The Good Life." That doesn't look like the good life to me. That looks like Pineville. I'm having deja vu with respect to game on. They talked about a nice thing. We all talked about the sports complexes. We all know it never happened. The PDD says they can build 50% of the residential before they start commercial. What guarantee do we have that they don't stop at 49%? When they figure out maybe it's not viable, they've made enough money, or environmentally it costs too much to remove all the cars and the junkyard and environmental impacts and studies that may go along? I think that's it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sharon. That was the, that's the end of the list of people who signed up for the public hearing comments. Is there anyone who signed up on the other list called "public comments" who wanted to speak to this issue? Sure, if you're going to speak, yeah, if you're going to speak about the PDD change, you know, like I said, we do have these two separate public hearings. All right, very good. As long as you say your name and your address, you get three minutes.
Connie Cullen at 2056 Fuchsia Court. I'm in Lakewood and we all moved here probably because, probably what everyone did. It was supposed to be a nice feel, kind of the country thought. It is becoming quite a large metropolis, metropolis, and not a very aesthetically pleasing one. The townhomes that just got built, they have a single tree line, a large area of open wasted grass. I don't, where are the trees? It's, it's an eyesore every time you turn a corner because all that we see is these big houses or townhomes, and that's exactly what we're getting here. The, all the way along, stone crofts, all, that's all it is. You used to see these beautiful brick homes and a nice open field, and I'm a little disappointed that we, hopefully we haven't agreed to 30-plus percent more residential. We don't need it because our schools are already overcrowded. The developers should be paying for a lot more of the schooling. I'm sure they're not, but they should be. They have in many other states. I lived in Illinois. The developer actually helps pay for the schools. I don't know if that's happening here. I have no clue. But this is going to be, this is not, this is not going to be pleasant. I mean, it's going to be worse than Baxter when we live, when we're around here, once it's all done. And I totally agree. I think the residential should be secondary and the commercial should be primary because A, what advantages is it for us? None of us, we're all going to end up, our taxes are going to go up, maybe not Tika K, but Fort Mill and the state because we're going to have to pay for more schools. We're going to have a bond, but we're not going to get anything out of it but all these new homes. We really need residential secondary, and if you're going to do commercial, do that primary. It really should. Where's our movie theater? Where's all the fun stuff? I don't see any fun having all these homes. I don't enjoy it one bit. And that, kind of missing the feel of why we moved to Tika K. We need, there are no trees. I mean, the townhomes, they got one line of trees and that's ridiculous. Put more trees. Do something. Widen the roads. I get hit almost every time someone's taking a curve on Dam Road. It's too many, they didn't even widen it. So what's the plan as far as widening roads? What are the actual plans that are affecting us as residents? We don't care about what's going in the pockets of anybody. We care how it's going to affect our daily lives every day. We have to see the aesthetics of townhomes with little, any-bitty trees. Come on, we all enjoyed the tree lines. We enjoyed that. We want some version of that back because this is too much, 30%. That's ridiculous. We can probably do more commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, yes. Again, your name and your address, please. You have three minutes.
Amy Mitchell, 638 Reliance Court. So my street is the one that dumps right into this. I moved here, actually, I've lived in Tika K 15 years, but I just moved there a year ago this week. So I'm not happy about this. Some of the stuff is kind of cool, but I really want to know about the tree line on Stonecrest. I mean, y'all are talking about, I mean, my God, putting up more apartments? How many apartments do we have to have in Tika K? I mean, seriously, how many people do we need to cram into our tiny city? It's ridiculous. But the tree line, can we have a tree line buffer? There is a berm. It's a berm. There's already a tree line. I don't want to sit in my house that I'm putting in $100,000 of upgrades and stare at apartments. So make it look pretty. If you're going to cram a bazillion people more, make it look pretty, please, because, I mean, really. So that's my biggest problem with that, but it's, I'm a little frustrated that you want to put a bunch more commercial properties in Tika K when we already have vacant properties with nothing in it. There are Stonecrest buildings right down the street that are vacant. In the Walmart area, there's vacant buildings. Why are we building more commercial properties? We can't fill the ones that we have. So that's my point. I'm a little, I'm a little frustrated that we want to put in more commercial stuff and we can't fill what we have. So are those going to stay vacant when we build more? I mean, I just, I'm questioning that. What's the reason for that? I mean, we have a lot of space already. Why are we building more space for nothing? So that's all.
Okay, thank you. Is your comment about the PDD or the annexation?
It's about the design.
Okay. Your name and address, please. You'll have three minutes.
All right, I'm Carolyn McIntyre. I live at 1349 Moss Ridge Road. All right, so mine is...
You got to take the microphone with you.
Okay. Mine is that my family has lived here since 19, would you say, Mama, 49? 49. Okay. I've lived here for 40 years, okay? From this corner, all the way down here to this corner is us, okay? So that's all our family property. We don't get a buffer at all, according to this. So I don't understand why there's a green buffer all the way around until you reach here and then all of my family gets nothing. So I'm on the corner here, so I get the L shape of all this. So right here is my property, so I get all the townhomes. I get to see all that now. All my trees are gone. They've already been tore down by the other developer. So now, all this is down. It's just mud right now, but apparently I'm going to get to see all these houses and I'm guessing that's going to be their back door so they all, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, just get to stare at me in my one house. So I would like to see a green buffer go right there so that we also get, you know, the privacy that we've had for the past, you know, years. So I just think that's not fair that we don't have the buffer that everyone else seems to have on here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is it about the annexation or the PDD? Sure. Just say your name and address.
Okay. Elizabeth Duda, 1081 Palmyra Drive. I've attended the other public hearings about this. Okay. I have been attending the other public hearings about this. I like the, I've liked how it's been described as the main street feel. I like the connectivity. You know that I support pedestrian access, so there seems like a good amount of that in here. Bicycle access to a limited extent, I like the multi-use path going through sidewalks, all wonderful. I do wonder, so I do hear people talking about the increase in density. Can you talk about, did you consider a lower density? Could you support it with lower residential density? So, so that's, that's feedback that I've been hearing. And then, there was something else? Okay, so people are also asking about schools. What feedback have you heard from the school districts about, can they support the children coming in and then, and buffers? So tree buffers are the feedback that I'm hearing. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Liz. We're going to close the public hearing then on the changes to the PDD. And we will open a public hearing for the rezoning and annexation of tax map 644000038 and 64000042 from RUD in the county to the PDD in the city as part of a 100% annexation petition. And what this is from a legal standpoint is there's two additional parcels that aren't currently part of the city that would become part of the PDD as part of this whole overall development. And I think Charlie has a slide up there that shows what those two parcels are. So obviously related and intertwined, but two separate public hearings. So and again, I don't think there's any, Charlie, unless you need to...
I was just going to point out, this one, the tax map number, parcel that's up on the screen now is currently the Otto Salvaguard, and then this one is the former James Dees property where our place drive is. So they were originally considered as part of the PDD, but were never annexed in.
Got it, good. Thank you, Charlie. Counsel, do you have any additional comments on the annexation portion or the petition to rezone? Petition annex and rezoning? Commissioners, any additional comment on that aspect? So if there was anybody who signed up to talk specifically about that aspect, and I don't think there is, I think that's it then. So we'll close the public hearing then for the annexation, the annexation position and the rezoning from RUD in the county to PDD in the city. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Next on the agenda, there are a few special presentations. First, the introduction of our new TC PD officer. Chief Crosby, the floor is yours.
Mayor, Council, I'm going to give everybody just a few moments to step out of that, okay, before Mal comes in. Mayor, Council, this is certainly an exciting time for us here at Tika K Police Department here in the city. We have a brand-new addition to our police department, and normally whenever she comes in, she certainly steals the show. So I will not talk too much, but Officer K-9 Mal and her K-9 handler, K-9 Corporal Bowling, if you would come on in. K-9 Mal has a high drive. She loves to work, as you can see. She's very enthusiastic, whoa, don't throw the bone in me. She's very enthusiastic. She's also already made her first arrest, her first day back from training. K-9 Mal and Corporal Bowling went to Georgia where they completed a very extensive training program. I am very proud of both of them because they made excellent, did excellent in that program and done us very well. So I'm going to turn it over to Corporal Bowling, let him introduce himself, and K-9 Mal.
Good afternoon, everybody. We're definitely excited to be here, as you can tell. She's really excited. She listened patiently in the hallway for her moment, and now it's here. Mr. Mayor, Council, to the previous administration, on behalf of the Tika K Police Department, we can't thank you enough for approving the K-9 program. It's something that we've hoped for, for a while, and as Chief just alluded to, it didn't take her long to find her first arrest. She found methamphetamine on the back of a makeshift U-Haul that had been turned into some type of living quarters. It was, it was interesting to say the least, but we can't thank you guys enough for allowing us the opportunity to have the K-9 program. As you can tell, she's got energy to burn. This is her on the regular. She wants to do two things. She wants to work and she wants to love. The good thing about Tika K ending up with a Belgian is this, it's their drive. They want to please, they want to work, they want to do their job, and they want you to be happy. So for the citizens of Tika K, you couldn't have ended up with a better dog. Chief Crosby has a good relationship with the custom K-9 unit down in Georgia. He gave the owner of the company a few requests. He said, "I need a dog that's personable. I need a dog that wants to work and I need a dog that can be in my schools." And they couldn't have picked a better dog. My nine-year-old son, my 13-year-old daughter's here. Every day she sees my son, she's coming up, she's going to stand on her back legs, paws across the shoulders, and she's all in my son's face. So your children will be safe in schools with her, your roadways are going to be safer having her around, and for those that get lost or decide to run, she works her tail off on being able to find you. So again, we can't thank you guys enough for allowing us this privilege. I've been here with the city for four years, a little over four years myself now. It's been an honor to serve with you guys, to serve this community. And again, if you see us, if she's got the long leash on, chances are she's working. We can always come back by and visit later. If she's got the short leash on, come by and we'll visit anytime.
So K-9 Mal will have two instrumental jobs here in Tika K. She is a narcotic detection dog, so she would be doing traffic stops and other things to detect narcotics, but also what she can do is article tracks. So if we have a missing person, a missing juvenile, someone runs and throws something away during the course of that running, K-9 Mal will be able to track that because she's got a great sense of smell. Again, thank you, thank you, Mr. Fundberg, for your opportunity to let us have this dog. Thank you for supporting this project. It would definitely be a great asset to our city, so thank you again. Now, Council, I get to share with you some of the fine work that our officers have done over the past few months. So officers, if y'all would step forward, please. As y'all know, these days, law enforcement officers, we wear many hats. It's not just, as we heard, keeping our community safe and enforcing of traffic laws. We've turned into counselors, psychologists, and medical professions, if you will. And one of the things that officers have had to adjust to is the use of Narcan and recognizing when an individual may need that Narcan. So tonight, we're going to recognize these four officers for their life-saving award where they actually saved four individuals from dying. The first recipient is going to be Corporal Bowling. Corporal Bowling was recognized by Governor McMaster with a Narcan life-saving award after he administered two doses of Narcan and ultimately saved the life of a female. So Corporal Bowling, congratulations. The second recipient is Sergeant Etnall. Sarge responded to a call and referenced to a male subject that was slumped over the wheel of a car. Sergeant and his partner responded to the scene and made contact with the subject and realized that this individual was unconscious. They quickly realized that this individual needed Narcan. Sergeant Etnall went to his car, got the Narcan, and administered the Narcan where he also saved that individual's life. Sarge, congratulations and thank you. Our next recipient is Corporal Timms. Corporal Timms was assisting York County Sheriff's Office with a call about a subject not responsive and not breathing on the side of Gold Hill Road and Pleasant Road. Corporal Timms arrived on scene before any other units and observed that the male was not breathing for approximately 30 seconds. Corporal Timms got back to his car, administered the Narcan, and again, saved that individual's life as well. So Corporal Timms, congratulations. And our final recipient is Corporal Roberts. Corporal Roberts responded to TK residence in reference to a female that was lying in the grass. Upon arrival, Corporal Roberts was flagged down about a subject who stated the female was inside the residence and may need Narcan. After multiple attempts to waken the female, she was unable to bring the female conscious and Corporal Roberts administered one dose of Narcan and again, saving that individual's life as well. So Corporal Roberts, thank you. It's certainly something that we don't like to see, but we're certainly grateful that we have the tools and the equipment to save those individuals so they have another day that hopefully they're in rehab and they're making a better day for themselves as well. So thank you for the ability to have this equipment. Thank you for the training that you provide for us, and thank you for all of your resources. Thank you. Congratulations and thank you all for your... Congratulations, and thank y'all for your hard work. And Mayor, if you don't mind, Fire Chief Hasty, that's for bringing minutes to the last show. I brought the dog this time.
Final presentation this evening is Chief Hasty to present life-saving awards to some of our firefighters. Chief Hasty, the floor is yours, sir.
Mayor, counsel, great night in Tika K, right? So we too have a life-saving award. I'm going to read the scenario to you, that way you understand the magnificence of this. On February 17th, Tika K Fire Agent One was dispatched to Gold Hill Middle School for a seizure. On arrival, the crew found faculty on the phone with 911 dispatchers providing information and caring for the student. Agent One's crew found the patient to have blue lips, and she became pulseless. This led to the initiation of CPR and application of an automatic defibrillator. Once the defibrillator analyzed, the crew shocked the patient and continued CPR. Within two minutes of starting the resuscitation, color began to return. The patient's pulse returned, but her condition remained critical. After a few minutes of care, the patient once again became pulseless and CPR resumed. The patient's pulse returned a second time. EMS arrived, a quick report was given, and they performed a rapid patient assessment. The patient was quickly packaged by both crews and transported to Atrium Pineville for advanced care. Thanks to the quick thinking of her coach and school staff, a quick call to 911, a fast response from our team, and the grace of God, that patient, Rana Cannon, stands with me Knowing the strength that this young lady had, I reached out to her mom and to her and asked if they helped us to recognize the crew. At this time, I'd like to present each crew member of Engine One with a life-saving award. To receive this award, the firefighter must be a member of the department who is principally involved in the saving of the life of another person and whose actions were directly responsible for that life-saving act. One thing I want to do too is I want to recognize Mr. Epps, Ms. Harms, and Mary Margaret, the track coach, because they were the ones that initiated the response from us. So at this time, Rana, can I get you to help me? I'd like to recognize Crystal Stevens. You want, Crystal? And Engineer Chris Rose.
Thank you, chiefs. Our next item on the agenda is public comments. First up, we have Doug Creed. Is Doug Creed still present? Okay, he already spoke. Didn't know if he wanted to say something else. All right. If you could please state your name and address.
Jackie Travieso, 29031 Windjammer Drive. Listening to the February meeting where City Manager Charlie Fundenberg stated he's pursuing DNR, a DNR study or the services of a contractor for the study, my hope is that there will be a public discussion about the Tika K deer, and the following is considered. We've heard in previous meetings that the deer eat from our gardens, both vegetable and floral. The deer mean no ill intent, they're simply existing. We have moved into their space, demolished their habitat, and continue to reduce the native vegetation without giving them an alternative. Case in point, tonight's presentation. If the chief complaint, thank you, if the chief complaint is that they eat, my question is where is the responsibility of due diligence by this council and the city to explore the problem? What is the valid, rather than convenient justification for killing the deer since they have, since that's been stated as a goal by some of our council members? Where are the workshops to teach residents how to coexist with the wildlife in Tika K? The education about what to plant, how and why to focus on native vegetation, and why planting hostas is equivalent to putting an ice cream sundae in front of a child who wants to indulge? Where is the collaboration with the other cities who have encountered the same self-inflicted circumstances and changed environments, but who have figured out ways to coexist? The Humane Society of Ann Arbor holds Garden with Deer workshops, and Tika K can do the same. The truth is, there is no valid justification for killing the herd simply for eating. For years, the Humane Society of the United States has helped cities once that may have hired sharpshooters or recruited bow hunters to reduce deer numbers to instead sterilize deer. They provide a toolkit to persuade communities to take a more comprehensive approach toward resolving conflicts non-lethally. The goal is to stop the knee-jerk reaction of, "We've got to kill them." The toolkit is a 40-page document and can be found on their website at humane society.org. Killing deer will not resolve the people's conflicts with deer in their gardens. Certain plants like tulips and hostas are irresistible to deer. Even if the deer population could be brought to a lower level, the top-choice vegetation will still be eaten by the remaining deer. That's why effective solutions focus on deterring deer and protecting plant vegetation rather than trying to shoot every deer that may come in to eat it. We do not need to kill these animals because they are deemed a nuisance by some residents. We need to take steps toward resolving human-deer conflicts. In my three minutes, I do not have the opportunity to address the cruelty of an eight-minute death, nor the death of unborn fawns, nor the stress of orphaned fawns, nor the danger of within-city-limits shootings gone wrong. I encourage this council to actually consider the alternative to killing deer and to reach out to the Humane Society of the United States to adopt strategies to promote coexistence and not killing because killing programs don't solve conflicts with deer. I thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. With no additional public comments.
Mayor, Matt Dewitt, is Matt still here? Yep. Matt had, even though he's on Planning Commission, had signed up under the public hearings and had notified me he does want to do.
Absolutely.
Public comments.
Matt Dewitt, 2045 Manila Bay Lane. Mayor, Members of Council, appreciate your time for all of these projects. As a member of the Planning Commission, as Charlie mentioned, my commission will end before I am able to make a vote on the PDD amendment, so I'm here speaking as just a regular old private citizen. So other than the concerns that were expressed tonight, that is not my bread and butter. I'm here to speak more about public engagement. As we know, the projects of this scale affect the entire community, and they can't be created and developed in a vacuum in a back room somewhere. We've got to do a better job of public engagement. This project has probably been in the works for months, if not years, and over that time we get weekly newsletters about walking on the golf course or recycling over and over and over, but there's never any discussion about upcoming projects and how they're going to affect everybody in getting more public engagement. So I would encourage you, as the new council and remaining council members. Gus, thank you. To use your platforms. You know, I feel like before I made a random Facebook post about this project, it was unclear to anybody or the majority of the city that this was happening. And I feel like that's got to change, and I feel like you guys have the opportunity to use your Facebook, your newsletters, your emails, whatever it may be, to get more engagement, to get more support from the public. I want to thank you for your service on council and everything that you do for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dewitt. And that is all for public comment. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of minutes. Counsel, you've all received the minutes for our workshop on February 12th and our regular meeting on February 15th. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none, the minutes stand as approved as submitted. Move to the next item on the agenda. Item five is our committee appointments. Council has submitted their nominations for each committee, commission, and board. City Manager, if you could present the top nominees for each group.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. So I'm going to start, I'll do each one individually. After I read the name, if someone would just make a motion, you don't have to reread the names, you can just say, "As stated by the City Manager," motion to appoint, "As stated by the City Manager" would suffice, and then you'll go through your normal second and vote, and we'll take them one by one. So for Board of Zoning Appeals, your top nominees are Amy Jo Denton, Maureen Herdic, Mike Tullos, and Amy Youngblood for Board of Zoning Appeals.
Counsel, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the nominees as stated by the City Manager.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Okay. Your next group is the Building Codes Appeals Board. We've got five vacancies, but we only got one applicant on that one. Fair enough, it is a board that I don't think has ever met, but Tom Goble, our former Development Services Director, still wanting to get engaged, did throw his name in the hat and was nominated by all of council, so we'll throw Tom's name in the hat for you.
With that, counsel, can I have a motion?
They can make a motion to accept, Tom.
Motion by Gus, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott, having a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous?
Your next one is the Economic Development Commission. You have five vacancies, five applicants. All were nominated by council. Those names for the record are Joshua Glenn, Roger Metz, Clint Parker, Ashley Raben, and Jim Stalford. We also have, out of the responses we got back from our students, Ethan Lewis is our first student liaison, asked to be the liaison for the EDC. So that is your list for the economic development group.
Okay. Counsel, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Scott, do I have a second?
Second.
He was first. Second by Gus. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous?
Your next group is the Planning Commission. We had four vacancies, and as per the usual, Planning Commission got the most applicants, seven applicants there. Your top nominees are Nick Amico, Amy Burrows, Adam Grabiak, and Ryan Ross.
Counsel, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve is called.
Have a motion by Scott, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Tom, having a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Your Stormwater Committee, we've still got, we've had four vacancies, got one applicant. Mr. Gerald Ramirez was nominated by all of council.
Counsel, can I have a motion?
A motion to accept, Jared, to the Stormwater Committee.
Have a motion by Tom, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Gus, having a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And your last group, the TK Forever Board of Directors, we had two vacancies. One of the things that I've asked Dustin to do, just because we've had so many people come on, drop off, midterms, things like that, it's gotten out of balance. So what they're going to do at their first meeting is get that a little bit more balanced so that we're back into the four and three there, but we did have two vacancies, you got five applicants. Your top nominees were Carolyn Hasty and Monica Thompson.
Counsel, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Scott, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Gus, having a first and a second motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. That's it. Thank you, sir. Item six on our agenda is the committee reports.
First up would be the EDC.
Yes, sir.
There was no quorum, so there was no discussion. I'm done.
Thank you, Councilmember, unanimous. Just wanted to make sure that I'll beat you before we move into that, okay. Next is Economic Development Commission. Ms. Britt, if you could update us on the Planning Commission.
And Mr. Grant, who's first on the chair.
Thank you, sir.
So obviously, a big part of our time in the last several meetings has been focused on the former game on, and we've participated in all the design shreds and stuff like that, so you've seen the results of that. The other things that we've done, Gus, you'll be able to hear this, is we're about one meeting away from having consensus on an auxiliary dwelling unit ordinance that we'll recommend to council on that, so we're really close on that. We've been working on changes to the public hearing and PDD development process, much to like what Matt talked about, and there's an ordinance, I think, second reading today, right? Isn't that the community outreach thing? So that's kind of wrapping up. We've made a lot of strides, there's still some work to do, as I think it's pointed out. And the last thing is, we submitted a work plan to you for the rest of the calendar year. So in past years, council's had some adjustments to that on priority, so if you give the commission any feedback that you have on that. That's it.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Overton, if you could update us on TK Forever.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, you guys are doing well tonight. We met on March 1st of TK Forever. One of the main items that we went over was the event, comedy for Catawba. Just kind of getting ideas of what we needed for that event. It is, after the event wrapped up, we ended up with 194 tickets that were sold to the event. We would have gotten to 200, but we had to cut it off due to seats, so to say that it went well is an understatement. We made about 4,600 after everything was said and done for that event, so very good fundraiser after it's all said and done. We're looking forward to getting Caroline back and then also adding Monica to our next meeting. The rest of the discussion for TK Forever Foundation centered around additional fundraising items, events, and things that we can do to continue fundraising for TK Forever. So that's my report. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Dustin. Next on the agenda is item 7A, the second reading of an amendment to the zoning code to add Article 15, Section 19-057. This amendment will require developers slash builders to notice and conduct community meetings for requests to create or amend planned development districts, mixed-use districts, planned unit developments, and a rezoning to a major subdivision or rezoning of. of over two acres of residential property to any other district. Can I have a motion?
Matt, are you listening? Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of an amendment to the zoning code to add Article 15, Section 19-507.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this matter?
Mayor, who got your second there? Scott?
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Nothing's great.
Okay. Well, hearing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Our next item on the agenda is item 8A, a bond reduction request for courtyards at Tika K. The council previously approved a reduction of the original letter of credit to $129,685.25. This request is to reduce the LOC further to $108,750. The city engineer has reviewed the estimate and has found that the reduced amount is appropriate for the completion of the remaining site development work. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the letter of credit and the performance labor and materials surety agreement and bond reduction for the courtyards at Tika K, continued upon approval of substance and form by the city attorney.
Have a motion by Tom, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Scott. With a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item 8C.
8B was the, oh, 8B, sorry, 8B, jumping ahead here. Thank you, sir.
8B. The city is the resolution to create Parks and Recreation Ad Hoc Committee. The city last updated its Parks and Recreation Master Plan in 2009. The plan is referenced in our comprehensive plan and has not been updated since the plans were finalized for Catawba Park. The purpose of this ad hoc committee will be to work with staff that is designated by the city manager to conduct the necessary surveys and studies necessary to update the plan and bring it back to the city council. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. For those who are not aware, when we had our workshop, a lot of the things we talked about were Parks and Rec. I want to recognize Liz Duda in the crowd here. She was in, she was at the workshop and reached out to me afterwards and recommended just this. She said, "You have a lot of stuff on there, Parks and Rec," and it hadn't been updated since 2009, she recommended we do this. I thought it was a great idea, and so thank you, Liz, appreciate it. And here we are, thank you.
May I make just one comment? I am absolutely all in favor of bringing back the volunteerism to our city. My only concern, I'm a devil's advocate thinker. We just had committees, longstanding committees, and we have vacancies on those committees. When you're out campaigning, and when I was campaigning, you know, this is a need, this is a need, this is a need, but then when the time comes, nobody shows up, nobody steps up. So I'm going to vote in favor of this, but I would like to see some means of recruiting responsible people to sit on these committees. You know, those that said that we need this and those that said I want to serve on this committee, then let's serve. You know, I hate sitting up here with the amount of time that we've all volunteered and staff and, you know, those that serve on these committees, and then you got three vacancies. So let's get the right people on there.
Thank you, Gus. Do we have any more discussion? Can I have a motion?
That all being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution to create a Parks and Recreation Ad Hoc Committee for the purpose of updating the city's Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Second.
Have a motion. Gus, and have a second by Tom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
You better be the first one on the committee.
I've got duct tape. All right. Moving on to our next item, item 8C, resolution supporting the creation of a Community Relations Council. The South Carolina Human Affairs Commission approached the city about allowing for the creation of a Community Relations Council. The purpose of this council once created will be to help educate citizens on and to celebrate all races and ethnicities within our city. The council, once formed, will coordinate with staff, but will be a citizen-led group. Give me one second. This is the exact kind of committees that I have been referring to, to bring Tika K There was a pretty good amount of pushback while we were campaigning to not have this kind of a commission. However, I think that it is very important for our citizens to all realize each other's traditions, to realize each other's religions, and to not step on each other's religions, traditions, and anything that has to do with the rights of other people. Freedom of choice, freedom of speech, and freedom of religion is something that we hold dear as Americans, and I believe that this committee can help us all to push through, and we can all come and be more together in TK with this commission. So I would encourage every one of us to do what we can to step up and volunteer for this. And that's all I've got on that.
Mayor, if I can, before y'all vote on the resolution, the Shack, South Carolina Human Affairs Commission, we're going to be hosting a town hall-style meeting in this room on April 27th at 7:00 PM, and we'll be advertising that continually in our newsletters leading up to that. They're going to come in and basically really introduce the community to what the Community Relations Council is. As the mayor said in his introduction, staff will be on hand to help support that group, help them get going, and then just coordinate with them as they look to schedule events or if there's information, they want us to help get out educational material that we can do through our social media and website and things like that. But April 27th, 7 o'clock is when we'll have a kind of a kickoff meeting, and we will have volunteer applications for folks to join that council. And I think Shack recommends that it be anywhere between 12 and 20 people. So there's room for a lot of people to get involved. So we're excited about that.
Do we have any further discussion on that? Okay. Well, having no further discussion, can I have a motion?
Mayor, members of council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution supporting the creation of a Community Relations Council.
I have a motion by Scott, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Tom. With a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of council. First item on the agenda, the owner of the Tiki K Marina would like to take over ownership and maintenance of a portion of Marina Drive. Just in generalities, think about the first entrance that used to take you into the old city hall parking lot, all the way around through the marina, and in basically where the curb and gutter is on the other side. In exchange for that, the owner has agreed to extend the sidewalk in that area, providing a public easement for said sidewalk on down from where it ends at Marina Drive, all the way across his property to the other side of Marina Drive, which is basically the beginning of the cul-de-sac. Before, your city attorney and I have talked about it, it is something that we can do, but before we start working through that, not, obviously not looking for a vote this evening because it's not an actual item, but is this something that is palatable to council? Yeah, doesn't hinder access to any properties? So before we start down that road and working with the owner, I just wanted to kind of get your sense on it, council, before we move forward. Does that sound like something you would be interested in possibly seeing?
I think anytime that we can take asphalt and city paying for asphalt and paving out of the equation, I think it's a great idea. Given that I'm a member of the marina, I would request that we get that road paved very quickly.
Again, this will be something that we will have, if council is, I'm seeing some head nodding tonight, I'll begin working with city attorney and with the owner and bring something back to you here where you'll actually have a vote, and we'll put it on the agenda. Next up, finance department and I are working with our financial advisors, first try on a financial forecasting model that will be ready for use pretty soon, definitely before our budget process starts, maybe even as soon as next month. It's going to have five-year projections where we can put in certain capital things and their estimated cost, we can put in developments and what their revenues would be and anticipated cost. Turn things off and on, and you'll be able to see what that five-year forecast looks like with the goal of updating that every year. So we constantly have that five-year look forward. Little hesitant to go longer than five years. I mean, as you can see what's happened over the last several months, it's hard to forecast things out five years, or more than five years. But we feel like we've already seen a rough draft of the model. I think it's going to be excellent. The first time through it, we'll have our financial advisors in here, one, so our three new council members can meet them, and they can walk us through the tool, and it'll be something that our finance department and I are able to use as y'all come up with different capital ideas, as staff comes up with capital ideas, as new developments potentially come our way, we're able to plug those in and see what does that do? What does that do for us financially over the course of that five years? So looking forward to bringing that to you. If you haven't been by Ballfield over the last couple of weeks, you've missed out that spring sports have definitely started up. The fields are packed. So just a friendly reminder, please slow down around those sport fields and be mindful of our youngsters that are biking and walking to games and practices. There's a slew of them. There's a lot of moms and dads in cars and carpooling, so just be mindful around Lookout and Rundy and TK Elementary and Turner Fields. First concert of the season is coming up on April 23rd with Euphonic. Regardless of the rumors, it will be at Rundy. That will be a thing. DJ is going to start at 6:00 and the band kicks off at 7:00 o'clock and they'll play till 10:00. So looking forward to get the concerts going again. It really kind of makes you think summer's here. So we're excited to get that next month. Last but certainly not least, and this was brought up earlier, deer. Tim Gillette, if you have not noticed this evening, is not with us this evening because he and other staff members are with DNR staff. They are currently doing their study. So they're riding around various areas of the city and on the golf course, various neighborhoods that DNR has mapped out, doing a study. That's all that's being done right now is a study. Once we get that information back from DNR and know what that information means, then I would imagine we're going to have a number of meetings and whatnot on it. But we'll have some discussions with council as to what next steps you would like to go. I've gotten a lot of emails from folks, don't shoot them, but sterilize them, relocate them, you know, all those types of things. I need to be very, very clear on this. SCDNR, which is the governing body over this, they have all the jurisdiction over this, only allow one method. They call it their Urban Deer Management Plan, and it is hiring sharpshooters with rifles, with noise suppression. They can hunt them, shoot them over food plots. We would have to designate the area and town in which they can do it. There is no tranquilizing and relocating, there is no birth control. I know those things are allowed just across our border in North Carolina through North Carolina Fish and Wildlife. South Carolina Department of Resources has one method currently approved, and that is using sharpshooters to shoot them. So I've explained that to the folks that have emailed. A lot of them don't like that. This is not something the city has control over. We have control over whether or not to use the Urban Deer Management Plan or to go a different route. So first and foremost, before council has to get engaged in any of those discussions, we want to get as much information as we can, let you know what's out there. All right? So that study is being conducted as we speak. They started around, actually, they started about 15 minutes ago. So that is going on. Again, once we've got the information and we know what that data is actually telling us, do we have an overpopulation issue or do we have a socialization issue? Then obviously, we're going to bring that back to council and have a discussion on where that goes from there. So did want to follow up on that, and that concludes my report for this evening.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, we're not going to recognize you on the floor. You had a chance to speak, and we let you speak. Yes, ma'am, we did. Thank you. Does anyone on council have any questions for the city manager? Okay. Next is council comments. So I would like to start with Mr. Gus Machunas.
For once, I'm not going to have a whole lot. First off, and Chief Hasty left, and Chief Crosby, I thank you for all this you do to begin with, but you know, tonight you made us all proud to be, you know, part of Tika K and certainly the support that past councils and current council are always going to give to our first responders. That's why it's easy for us to say yes. Don't ask me for anything else, but that's why it's easy for us to say yes to you. You guys do an outstanding job, and we appreciate it. You had some big shoes to fill, and you've done it quite admirably, so we appreciate that. Secondly, thanks to everybody who volunteered to serve on our committees, and more importantly, those that are going to volunteer to serve on the new committees, right? So thanks for that.
Mr. Shirley.
Thank you. Again, can't say enough to thank you, Chief, and Chief Hasty, for what you do for our community, watching that, those presentations for the life-saving efforts from your staff, your team, and the fire department team. It's hard to watch that mom stand there with that girl, really was. Very, very proud of our city and our first responders. Thank you for what you do. I've stopped by the police department three times to see them all, and you guys are keeping her busy, obviously, because I haven't gotten to see her yet. But being an off-the-chart dog lover, I'm going to find my way to meet that girl. Congratulations. The congratulations to the committee positions. Thank you for being willing to volunteer, and thank you to those that will not be volunteering. Again, you served the city well for a long time, and we thank you for that. Sorry to see you guys step down, but thank you for that. And Matt, I want to thank you for your comments on social media and also tonight, referring to public engagement. It's certainly a need that we have between city staff and council and our citizens, and I want you to know that we're going to take that seriously, and I hope you'll see good things to come with that. Thank you for your comments on that. Game on, for those of you that are still paying attention, we have a long way to go with that project, and a lot has to be accomplished before we can take it to a yes or no vote. And we're really counting on the Planning Commission and Economic Development to advise us appropriately on how we should go with that. So thank you in advance for the work that'll be done there and the work that's been done. Regarding the deer study, I would respectfully ask Mr. City Manager if, once that study's completed, that I'd like to be included in the discussions with biologist and Dr. Ruth, if that's okay.
Hundred percent. Not a problem.
As a hunter and conservationist, I have a passion for the sport, but I have more of a passion for the animal and the species. I don't have a problem with the deer in Tika K, I really don't. They don't bother me. They keep my bushes trimmed and my grass trimmed. I don't have a problem with that. What I have a problem with is what the health of those deer are starting to look like, and I want to make sure that a good herd is a healthy herd. So I'd be interested in that discussion. That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Heisler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, can't be said enough, I want to reiterate my thank you to the four fire, I mean, the three firefighters, four police officers, real moving tonight, and the work they do is important. Chief, I see it back there, thank you. You know we support you. The work your officers do is amazing. I know Chief Crosby's left, but the, I mean, excuse me, Glenn, Chief Hasty's left, but the fire department, boy, what a job. I have a young daughter, boy.
I have a young daughter, boy, seeing that mom, that really chokes me up. But, the work they did, boy, great for them. The residents, I know most of them have left, but thank you for coming. We love hearing your feedback and your input. We want it, we seek it. Matt, we will do a better job. We got this ordinance passed and promise you, everyone up here is going to do a better job to get this information out to the public as soon as possible so that we can get public input, sooner the better. To the committee members that got appointed tonight, congratulations. I'm not sure who else has left that is departing, but I see Chris Leonard, I see Matt in the back. Thank you so much for everything you've done for planning, really appreciate it. And Charlie, I look forward to that financial forecast. You know, one of my big reasons for running was my concern of the long-term financial situation of the city. And, so, thank you for requesting that, and I look forward to reviewing that and seeing how we can ensure, you know, TK is financially solvent for the long term. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I am through.
Thank you, Mr. Heisler. I would like to thank everyone that, all of these guys, you know, think we need to beat that horse again, but I would like to recognize, thank you, Mr. Leonard, Mr. Witt, for the service that you give in our community over the years. It is highly prized information and just hate to see you guys leaving us, but do understand that traveling has to be done. But, so, I would like to thank all the other folks that stepped up and want to be a part of the conversation, part of the solution in our community. So, for those folks that got on those committees, I really appreciate you stepping up to do so. I'd also like to thank the officers for me that saved lives. The fire department folks that saved lives, they do it every day, folks. Next time you get a chance, give them a hug. It goes a long way. They get beat up every day, and just a handshake and a thank you to those folks goes a long way to keep up morale for our people. They do an excellent, outstanding job for us every day, and they are in the line of fire. So, I just would encourage you to thank a cop, thank a fireman, thank a councilman. But, I appreciate everyone's time tonight, thanks for everybody being in attendance, and we do want to take into account everyone's point of view. It is, we're all in this together. Like I said before, this is one piece of dirt that we all have to share, and we all need to get along and doing it and just bring the whole community together. So, with that, our last item on the agenda is an executive session for the discussion of a contractual matter pertaining to the food and beverage license agreement with the Shore Club and contractual matters related to the garbage and recycling services. Can I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
Have a motion by Gus, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a second by Scott. Is there any further discussion? With that, all in favor of going to executive session, single by saying aye.
Aye.
We are in executive session.